Oh, that's a good question. I am.
I am.
I am.
I am.
I have one shot to go.
I'm with you Zoe.
Good.
I got my first one on Monday.
Yep. I get, I get my second one on April 20th.
Yeah, I just got my first one on Monday too.
Supervisors, I'm interrupting the survey to call this meeting of the O'Klaire County Board of Supervisors to order on this Wednesday, April the 7th. We'll have firstly honoring of the flag followed by a moment of reflection by Supervisor Bates. Supervisors, please unmute. And together, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation under God.
God.
Invisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
For all.
Well, that was relatively good.
For all.
Supervisor Bates.
Thank you. In Parker Palmer's Healing the Heart of Dramatry, the courage to create a politics worthy of the human spirit. Palmer explores what historian Joseph Ellis describes as the most potent and consequential words in American history. The first few lines of the Declaration of Independence. The words are familiar. We hold these truths to be self evident that all men are created equal and they are endowed by their Creator with unalienable rights. Among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. While some may consider this an American myth, others find it expresses an aspiration to honor human equality. We have been compelled to further pursue that aspiration for 250 years. This evening, we are issuing a proclamation celebrating history month, celebrating their culture and recognizing their contribution to our communities. The proclamation also condemns violence against Asian and Pacific islanders and their descendants. Reminding us that it was still aspiring to create an equal society. Our work is not done. We must be vigilant and speak out against discrimination that divides us as a people. As leaders in the community have the courage to speak your voice clearly and the humility to listen to others openly in an ongoing effort to create a politics worthy of who we aspire to be as a people. We are stronger together. Also, we'd like to remind folks that there are community events listed that are in relationship to the Mung celebration on their Facebook site. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Bates. Samantha, will you call the roll, please?
I'll do it.
Oh, sorry.
Gibson?
Present.
McKinney?
Present.
Knight? Pagonis?
Here.
Anton?
Here.
Zook?
Here.
Chilson? Stelges?
Here.
Maury?
Present.
Coffee?
Here.
Penny? Bates?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Gatlin?
Present.
Smire?
Here.
Hamburg Foyle?
Present.
Nieman? Nieman? Dunning?
Here.
Wilkie?
Here.
Anderson? Beckfield?
Present.
Schneider? Catherine Zier?
Here.
Leary? DeLuca?
Here.
Danson?
Here.
Rothnagle?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Rock? Christopherson?
Present.
We have 23 present.
We have Quorum. Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of the Journal of Proceedings for March the 16th, 2021. A motion, please.
Beckfield so moves.
Beckfield moves.
Anton Second.
I'm sorry, who is, is that Anton?
Yes.
Anton Seconds, thank you. Any deletions, corrections to the Journal of Proceedings? Supervisors, please unmute. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the Journal of Proceedings, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be the reports. We have, we have five reports this evening. First is a highway building update from Matt Tyson. Matt, I think you're online.
Chair Smire.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we just recognize public comment? I did not receive any, but we recognize it.
I'm sorry. It's a good thing that you keep me honest. Thank you very much. Is there anyone online who wishes to present public comment? Anyone online who wishes to present comment? I hear no indication of public comment. We will now go on to Matt Tyson. You're on, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Chair Smire. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I, my laptop does not have a camera, so you just get my voice tonight. So I'll give you the, the overview of the highway building project. CBS Squared has been selected as the architect, architectural firm for the project. Market and Johnson has been selected as the construction manager for the project. On March 25th, we had a project kickoff meeting for the design. All the stakeholders were in attendance. The design process is expected to take approximately six to seven months. We have confirmed as of the building committee today that the Meals on Wheels Kitchen will be incorporated into the design of the project. The building committee, we have scheduled meetings right now monthly at a minimum and will have additional meetings if needed. We're expecting that the project will be bid out to contractors starting in October to early November. And the construction is expected to take approximately 12 months and to be completed around November of 2022. We are currently scheduling tours of some other recently built county highway shops in the state. And we are hoping to visit those sites yet this month. So that's kind of what I have to report on the highway project right now. We're just getting rolling on it. And the next 12 months will be very busy taking care, I'm sorry, the six months will be busy taking care of the design of the project. So looking forward to it.
Before we start any questions or discussion, let me mention I'm monitoring for raised hands. If you prefer to raise your hand to speak, otherwise if you just wish to speak. Supervisor Bates, I saw your hand.
I prefer to raise my hand.
Were you raising your hand to speak?
Nope.
Okay, all right. We'll figure, okay Supervisor Coffee.
Oh, this is Supervisor Kronk via phone. I'm having trouble getting in on WebEx.
Oh, okay. Well, we will record you as present.
Thank you.
We are on the point.
This is Ray Henning. I'm calling by phone too because I couldn't get in on WebEx.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Supervisor Coffee, you had a question or comment? You're muted. You're muted.
Now I am. Now I'm okay, I think.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, thank you. I'm really excited that Meals on Wheels is being part of this design. I think that it, it just makes a lot of sense. And I hope that that works out as we move forward in the construction.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or question for Matt regarding the Highway Department Building? Okay, Matt did such a good job. Oh, sorry Supervisor Kronk.
Thank you. I know there's not the, I apologize. I'm not sure why I'm having trouble getting in on, online. I just had a question and because I was struggling, perhaps this was briefly covered, but I'm curious about how we contract. If there's been discussions when we're, when we're spending large amounts of money, like with the Highway Department or the upcoming Sixth Courtroom, how, or have there been discussions at the committee levels about how we build equity into our contracting?
I'm not sure who would respond to that. Tim, Matt? I'm not sure.
This is Catherine.
Catherine.
And I would offer just a few quick notes and Supervisor Pagonis can also speak to this. The Finance and Budget Committee has been talking about purchasing policy and our purchasing team has been having conversation about language in our contracts that actually provides the equitable framework. And so that's been part of the ongoing work. Supervisor Pagonis, I don't know if you want to add any additional comment? Because the Finance and Budget Committee has been considering this as well.
Thank you Administrator Shaw. So yes, the Finance and Budget Committee has been looking at our purchasing policy. And we've been looking at the purchasing policy of other counties. And so there we, one of the elements is equity and purchasing. We're also focused on local vendors, local developers. And with a theory that, you know, we certainly want to keep O'Klaire County dollars as local as possible. So we're basically looking at both of those areas in terms of the best way to proceed, both by looking at equity in our purchasing and looking, there's a ranking that several, several elements go into the ranking. And so there's an assessment and then the, then it gets determined. So Matt may have something else to add to that.
Matt?
I really don't have a lot else to add on, or add to that. I know the Purchasing Department has been working on that. Typically, what I think Supervisor Pagonis is talking about is the RFP process where we request a proposal and then we grade those proposals based on different criteria. And each section of the criteria has a different point value. So I'm assuming that the Purchasing Department and Finance Budget are working on some changes to that process to make, make it more equitable.
Supervisor Kronk, did that respond?
That's helpful. Thank you. That is helpful.
Supervisor Zook, did you wish to speak? Okay, no?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who has a question or comment? Or Matt? Well, Matt did such a good job that we have him up next also on the Sixth Courtroom. Go ahead, Matt.
Sure. Sixth Courtroom Project, the original plans for this project were completed in November of 2018. The project was put on hold by the, the board pending an updated timeline of a judge appointment by the state of Wisconsin. In January, I was given the approval to go ahead and dust the plans off and had been working with Venture Architects, who was the original designer of the plans, on making some small tweaks to the plan for code requirements that have changed over the last three years while we were waiting on the state's approval, I guess, on the judge. The city of O'Klaire actually received notice late this afternoon that they have approved the plans. And we now can put the project out to bed. My goal is to start or put the project out to bed in the very new future and to start construction early summer with a completion date by the end of September. So that all will depend on the availability of materials, which is a real wild card in the construction industry right now. And contractor availability. So, but that is the goal as of right now is to be completed with that project by the end of September of this year.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Schneider with a question?
Supervisor Schneider.
Do you know if the courtroom will be looped for connection with people's hearing aids?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm pretty certain it is. I would have to defer to our IS department, but I have been working with them on this and they're working through all the different technology issues. But I can follow up with them to make sure that that is.
Any other questions or comments for Matt? I hear none. Next is federal stimulus funding update Administrator Shaw.
We are still waiting for guidance from Treasury on the specific use of funds. We have heard during a meeting this week that it is anticipated that it will be another 20 to 30 days before we actually receive that guidance. So at least we have that timeframe from which we know when guidance will likely be issued. Along with that, the county has had multiple conversations with partners about how we may, as a county, want to go about working with these funds and the Committee on Administration will have this on their next agenda for discussion and will likely be bringing a report back to you, the board. And that is all I have, Chair Smire.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Administrator Shaw? Or in regard to the funding? Okay, I hear none. Next is a report from Supervisor Maury on the Broadband Committee.
Thank you, Chair Smire. I just as a reminder, the Broadband Committee was created in August of 2019 to serve as a collaboration and connection hub that works with citizens, businesses, industries, agriculture, units of government and broadband providers to increase the availability, delivery and utilization of high speed internet services countywide. Our goal is border to border coverage. When we first started meeting, we were thirsty for any kind of internet expansion. It seemed to me that we were meeting month after month to try to get a drink of water from a barely dripping garden hose. Recently, we've had some successes and the future is looking very promising, almost overwhelming. Two partners that we brought to the table submitted a state PSC broadband grant. They were linked, a linked grant. They each had to submit a separate grant, but these grants were selected for funding and this summer 24/7, which is West Wisconsin Telcom, kind of their outreach arm and Tri-County Communications are going to lay fiber in all of Drummond Town. So the whole town of Drummond will be receiving fiber. Next summer, they'll link up the residents with the, you know, fiber to the premises installations. 24/7 was also successful for a fiber extension down Town Hall Road in Brunswick that will add 31 households, some businesses, the Brunswick Fire Department and the Brunswick Town Hall. A partner for this expansion was O'Klaire Energy Co-op, which will benefit from fiber to one of its substations that monitors electricity consumption. A third success is really a pilot and you have approved this project in a previous meeting. But just as an update, we put together, and a lot of credit goes to Dave Hayden and Rod Esslinger and their staffs for contacting and arranging cooperative collaborative relationships with, including O'Klaire County, Starlink, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, O'Klaire Economic Development Corporation. All three of the major medical providers, so HSS, HS, Mayo, Marshfield, CVTC, O'Klaire Energy Cooperative, PESI or PESI Continuum Ed, and the Augusta School District. This is a test of beta, of Starlink's better than nothing beta rollout of their low earth orbit satellite system that has become operational in parts of our county. You can even pick it up in Brunswick Town. This pilot is now fully funded and will pay for the initial equipment, which comes to about $580 with shipping and sales tax. And one year of monthly fees, which amount to $99 a month for 30 to 50 households and businesses within the target hexagonal Starlink area south of Augusta. The Broadband Committee and the major partners are currently reviewing 60 applications we have for this program. A final success that is currently being developed is a digital literacy program that can support any county resident who wants to increase their ability to utilize high speed internet resources. A student group from University of Wisconsin, O'Klaire College of Business, Professor Scott Lester's Community Leadership Course is putting the final touches on this program, which will be launched sometime in August or September. We'll be recruiting and training students who want to meet their service learning requirement for graduation and from UW O'Klaire. Also 4H students who want to use the experience as a project, they can present at the annual 4H County Fair and any interested citizen volunteers. These digital coaches will be trained and matched with citizens who want to develop specific internet skills. Looking ahead, and in just a few months, that dripping garden hose has become a fire hose at full blast. There are several programs that have become law or are in the works that promise to expand broadband access to all citizens, especially our rural citizens and low income families. The American Rescue Plan is already law, has two provisions for broadband expansion, including over 120 billion coming directly to local governments and counties, and that includes towns. The Emergency Broadband Benefit Program is also already in place and it will provide low income households with a $50 per month discount for eligible broadband and a one time $100 reimbursement for laptops, computers and tablets purchased through a qualified provider such as 24/7. President Joe Biden has proposed an infrastructure bill, and this is just proposed, the Americans Jobs Plan, Jobs Plan, but that promises to deliver high speed broadband to all Americans, including 35% of rural Americans who are lacking access to broadband at minimally acceptable speeds. Not to be outdone, Governor Tony Evers has also declared 2021 as the year of broadband access in Wisconsin and has proposed a biennial budget that includes 200 million investment in, to improve Wisconsin's broadband infrastructure. By comparison, Senator Jeff Smith has noted that this is five times the amount that the state invested in broadband in the 2013, 2015, and 2017 budgets combined. There may be an even bigger boost for broadband on the way. The House Majority Whip James Clyburn and Senator Amy Klobuchar have reintroduced the Accessible Affordable Internet for All Act. This is a 94 billion act to expand high speed broadband, improve speeds where internet is slow and help families who are struggling to pay their monthly bills, monthly internet bills. So right now, the Broadband Committee is trying very hard to keep up on all the rules and requirements for these programs, which have not been rolled out as Catherine, as Administrator Shaw has noted. We are pursuing a strategic approach that will help us prepare applications in the future. So our approach is to continue to collaborate across public and private sectors and reach out to bring as many new parties to the table, such as the Towns Association, to continue to use our GIS based broadband survey developed by the Planning and Development Staff to map and document our countywide broadband coverage in areas of underserved and unserved need and begin to develop or support the development of a technical analysis and cost estimates for broadband construction, equipment and operations, develop a business strategy, check, create a grant checklist and start marking off the basics and finally create the plan for and a checklist and timeline to, to map our progress to our ultimate goal of having 100% broadband access. And I'll stop there. Sorry, I was a little long winded tonight.
No, that was, thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. Any questions, comment, discussion? I see no hands. I hear no voices. Thank you Supervisor Maury. Next and certainly least is an update and report from the Chair regarding the, the Communicable Disease Task Force. And I will ask those who have direct knowledge to add whatever you wish to add to my comments. The task force has met twice. In the second meeting, Tim Sullivan and Steve Nick provided the legal background, the context information followed by comments from Dan Steyer, who is the facilitator for the group. And the, the group spent the rest of the time expressing their opinions and their perspectives from the various sectors that they represent regarding the shape of a, of a, of an ordinance, a communicable disease ordinance. There was the intention of having a listening session after the second meeting. It's now been postponed until after the third meeting because we need to spend some time talking about how that will be done in such a way that we have, we have the feedback that we need from the community, the concerns and so on. I think that pretty much summarizes it. I will ask any other person associated with the task force to make any comment that you wish to make to expand on my comments. Any other comments? It's moving along. It's moving somewhat slowly. It's a large group of people. The facilitator is trying to make sure that everyone is included in all perspectives and so on. I think that it will begin moving a little faster in the third meeting. So having said that, we'll move on now to presentation of petitions, claims and communications. Our county clerk is going to be very busy here. First is a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 28th to April 30th. I'm sorry, 26th to the 30th, as Work Zone Awareness Week in O'Klaire County. Clerk McDonald.
Whereas the Wisconsin County Highway Association is asking all 72 counties in the state to unite and kick off Work Zone Safety Awareness Week with a resolution and campaign to raise awareness for its workers, the traveling public, public safety workers and those of various highway contractors performing work for the counties. And whereas construction and maintenance activities on our streets and highways require that work zones be established. And whereas in Wisconsin, there is an average of 20, or of 2,677 work zone crashes each year. And there have been over 13,000 crashes resulting in 5,200 injuries and 50 deaths over the past five years. And whereas in 2019, Wisconsin suffered from over 2,400 crashes in road construction and maintenance zones resulting in 899 injuries and 18 deaths. And whereas between 2014 and 2019, there were 85 deaths recorded as a result of crashes in Wisconsin work zones, including three Wisconsin County Highway workers who were killed in work zones in 2015. And whereas through their enforcement activities and other participation, the O'Klaire County Sheriff's Office, Wisconsin State Patrol and O'Klaire County Highway Department are committed to working together in 2021 to make Work Zone Awareness Week a success. Whereas the Federal Highway Administration has designated April 26th through April 30th of 2021 as National Work Zone Awareness Week. Therefore, I, Nick Smire, Chair of the O'Klaire County Board, do hereby proclaim April 26th through April 30th of 2021 be designated as Work Zone Awareness Week in O'Klaire County.
Thank you. The Chair looks for a motion to approve. Motion by Supervisor Leary? Is that correct? Second?
McKinney.
Second by Supervisor McKinney. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the proclamation? Supervisors, please unmute. All those voting to approve the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is proclamation celebrating Mung history and condemning violence against Asian. Next is proclamation celebrating Hmong history and condemning violence against Asian Pacific Islander, other designated groups, other designated American groups, community. Sorry, didn't read that correctly. Clerk McDonald.
Whereas April is Hmong History Month, a time to reflect on the sacrifices the Hmong people selflessly made for the United States during the Vietnam War, and an avenue to celebrate the robust culture they bring to the United States and the state of Wisconsin and Eau Claire County. And whereas 23 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders account for approximately 7% of the total population of the United States. And whereas Asian Americans have for far too long been the target of xenophobic policies, labor exploitation, hate crimes and systemic racism in the United States. And whereas the use of anti-Asian rhetoric has intensified by 150% in major US cities during this past year, resulting in Asian Americans being harassed, assaulted and scapegoated for the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the World Health Organization and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recognize the naming COVID-19 by its geographic location or linking it to a specific ethnicity perpetuates stigma. And whereas no one should live in fear in our communities across the United States and in the state of Wisconsin. It is hereby proclaimed by the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors that the month of April 2021 is hereby proclaimed to be Hmong History Month in celebration of the robust culture Hmong people bring to Eau Claire County, the state of Wisconsin and the United States. And be it further proclaimed, the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors condemns violence of all forms against the Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American community. And be it further proclaimed that the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors encourages everyone to condemn anti-Asian bias and to relearn and seek opportunities to experience cultures other than their own, review their practices that may create barriers or contribute to systemic racism, and in these ways and others, seek to become a more welcoming, inclusive community.
Thank you. The Chair looks for motion to approve the proclamation.
Wilkie, motion to approve.
I heard Supervisor Wilkie move. Could I have the second? A Dunning seconds. Thank you. Any questions or discussion of the proclamation? We'll do this by voice vote. Please unmute. All those in favor of the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. The third proclamation claims April 2021 as National County Government Month in Eau Claire County, Clerk McDonald.
Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes and boroughs serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities and much more. And whereas Eau Claire County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of National Association of Counties President Gary Moore, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs and services. And whereas Eau Claire County was incorporated in 1856, and the mission is to provide quality, innovative and cost-effective services that safeguard and enhance the well-being of residents and resources. Eau Claire County Government Services touch those who live in the county, visitors and others in the Chippewa Valley. Now therefore, I, Nick Smyer, Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors Chairperson, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as National Government Month.
The Chair seeks a motion to approve the proclamation. Motion by Supervisor Bates? Second Supervisor Gatman. Thank you. Any discussion, questions about the proclamation?
Right near the end, it said national government or was it county government month?
Clerk McDonald.
Well, the last line of the proclamation probably should read National County Government Month. I'll make that correction on here.
Okay, without objection. We'll proceed to a vote. Please unmute. All those in favor of the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. The next item is a rezoning request from owner and applicant Mark K. and Barbara A. Goings for the town of Lincoln. This item will go on to a future agenda of this board. Next, under section 10 of our agenda, reports of standing committees, committees, commissions and boards from the Committee on Administration, File 75.
Creating section 4.30.140 of the Eau Claire County Code, Child Support Agency Fees.
Motion.
Beckfield.
Beckfield moves.
Wilkie seconds.
Wilkie seconds. Thank you.
Chair Smaller, if you'd like me to give a presentation on this, I could do that.
I was going to stick Supervisor Bates with that, but I think she's nodding in agreement with you. So.
This is a request for the creation of child's fees for non-4D cases. And I'll give you some background with regards to that. Typically, in Eau Claire County and other states, child support agencies are referred to as 4D agencies because they're essentially by the federal government under 42 USC code part D. And so that's how they're called 4D cases. 4D cases are those cases that are typically referred to by the Department of Human Services to the child support agency for services for such things as establishing paternity, establishing child support obligation, modification of the child support obligation, enforcement of child support cases, collection of arrears, establishment of paternity, if I didn't say that already. And so that is one way that a case becomes a 4D case. In addition to that, a party or parties can come in and fill out an application with the child support agency and request the services of the child support agency, and they also become what is known as a 4D case. As part of federal legislation and state legislation, the child support agency is also required to service what are called non-4D cases. These are cases that are not referred from the Department of Human Services in which there is no application on file for the services of the child support agency. The major distinction between 4D cases and non-4D cases is that 4D cases are reimbursable to the child support agency from the state of Wisconsin and ultimately the federal government. There's a 66% reimbursement to the agency. If you have a non-4D case, you could still come in and request such things as a copy of your payment record. The child support agency has to put your case on what is called the kid's system. We maintain a payment record, and we also would, if you came in and requested, send out an income withholding order for your particular case. Currently, they're doing that without being reimbursed or paid for by the non-4D participants. So this particular ordinance does two things. One, it it creates fees for those cases that are non-4D cases. So that if somebody comes in and requests reconciliation of their accounts, if you can see that down below under 4.30.140, they would be charged a fee of $25. If they want a printed payment history for their case, it would be also $25. Part of requesting that we establish fees on the child support agency is two-part, two-pronged. One is, is that it's collecting a fee for a service that we're providing now and not otherwise being paid for. The other portion of that is, is it encourages those cases which are non-4D cases to fill out an application and become 4D cases. The advantage of that to the child support agency is, is that typically 4D, non-4D cases are cases where the history of the case involves a parents who have an ability to pay child support. They typically pay a larger amount of child support and they increase the performance numbers of the child support agency. Performance numbers are important for the child support agency because the reimbursement that the child support agency receives from the state under its contract are the numbers that determine how much reimbursement comes back to the county and the state or the county and the child support agency on an annual basis. So a person could come in and request one of these services. They could be offered the opportunity to fill out an application for free. Then we would provide services to them at no cost. And in addition to that, we would potentially receive then reimbursement for their case. If they choose not to do that, then they would need to pay the fee for making those items that are listed under this section of the code that is listed below. So essentially, that's what's being requested here. This is something that has been approved now by the Office of Child Support Enforcement at the federal level and also Bureau of Child Support at the state level. And what I'm aware of is that other counties are also requesting a similar type of fees.
Just a procedural point, because of the nature of this, I'm assuming that we don't need two readings. We vote this evening.
This is the second reading.
This is, okay.
Yes.
Jesus.
Questions or comments?
Snyder with a question?
Supervisor Snyder.
Oh, why wouldn't this have been done a long time ago? I assume people have been offered the opportunity to become a 4D. Why wouldn't they take it without incentive?
Well, and I think the answer to that question lies in the fact that up until recently, BCS and OCSC, which are the federal and state agencies, haven't really given us a blessing in order to do this. And what they said in the past is you have to service these non-4D cases. You're not going to get any reimbursement from them. And that was pretty much where it was left. And now they've said it's okay if you request fees from them for these particular types of items.
Supervisor Snyder?
Wonder, wonder why they said it, but that's probably beyond the scope of general interest.
I'll assume that meets your expectation then.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comment? Supervisors, we will do this also by voice vote. Please unmute. All those in favor of File 75, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe we have, and I've lost count of how many members are present. Clerk McDonald, can you help me with that?
I believe there are 28 members.
So we have 27 aye and one no on this one. The file passes. The next item is File 129.
A resolution authorizing legislation and matters referred to be carried over to the next legislative session.
Thank you. Motion?
Beckfield also moves.
Moved by Beckfield, second by Bates. Thank you. Supervisor Bates, I'm assuming Clerk Council will have this also.
Oh, well, if you'd like, that's fine.
No, it's not. I'm sorry. I made an assumption there I shouldn't have made. Please go ahead Supervisor Bates.
This is again by county code. All matters referred to a committee and not reported onto the board really have to be carried over at the end of the year. And this ordinance, this file actually takes those ordinances listed in in the file and moves them over into our next sessions. So it's not complicated. We do it every year. And I don't think it's, otherwise actually, we're not meeting the code. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My apologies for my assumption. Any other comments or discussion?
I have a coffee.
Supervisor Coffee, go ahead.
I have a clarifying question. First of all, shells should be S-H-A-L-L, not shale. There's an E there, so we might want to change that. But help me understand about when they're placed on file, does, what does that mean unless ordered by the board? So that means we're going to automatically look at them or not look at them, or help me understand that.
I can help you with that. If we place them on file in order for them to come back before the county board, they have to come back as a new resolution. Essentially is what they do.
Okay.
Essentially what, essentially what happens is they die at the end of the legislative session unless we carry them over or they're reintroduced as a new resolution.
All right. Thank you.
And without objection, we'll make that small correction that you made. Any other question or comment? I see no hands raised. I hear no voices. Please unmute. All? All those in favor of File 129, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next from the Committee on Parks and Forests, File 120.
Wow.
A resolution granting easements to Eau Claire Energy Cooperative in Section 5, Township 26 North, Range 6 West, in the town of Bridge Creek and in the town of Luddington.
Moved by Shraff Nagel.
Second, Knight.
Sorry, I had muted myself. Second by Supervisor Knight. Thank you. Explanation, would this be, who would this be?
Selges.
Selges, sorry. Apologies. Go ahead.
This is pretty straightforward. It's a simple easement to allow the utility company to take over headlines and bury them underground, which I think is a good solution for all involved. We do this routinely. And I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions, comment or discussion? I see no hands raised and I hear no voices. Supervisors, please unmute. All those in favor of File 120, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next from the Committee on Judiciary and Law, File 127.
A resolution requesting the state of Wisconsin strengthen its hate crime statute, Wisconsin statute 939.645, to provide enhanced security to members of Wisconsin's marginalized communities.
Motion. I hear a motion from Supervisor Gatman. Could I have a second again, please? I think that was, I heard Dunning first, I think. Was that you Supervisor Dunning?
Yeah.
Second by Supervisor Dunning. Thank you. Explanation Supervisor Wilkie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Resolution 127 is being brought before you for your consideration by judiciary and law, requesting the state of Wisconsin strengthen its hate crime statutes and to provide enhanced security to members of Wisconsin marginalized communities. and to provide enhanced security to members of Wisconsin marginalized communities. I should say, Mr. Chairman, the author of this resolution is a member of the committee Supervisor Roberts. If the chair would please do so, I think it would be appropriate that he speak to the content of the resolution.
I agree. Supervisor Roberts?
Thank you, Chair Smire. This resolution really strengthens Wisconsin's existing hate crime statutes. It adds clarifying language. It forbids the gay transgender panic defense. It adds training requirements for law enforcement. It expands the list of protected people. And it requires data collection and public availability of hate crime data, which isn't happening at all now. So we can't, we can't even look at data to tell what parts of the law, you know, really needs the most strengthening. So this is a general, a general revision based on a lot of research.
Thank you. Questions or discussion?
A comment from McKinney.
Supervisor McKinney followed by Supervisor Humbok Boyle.
I just wanted to thank Supervisor Roberts for bringing this forward through judiciary and law. I, I think we, that we cannot do too many of these kind of resolutions to bring awareness to things that really need to be changed in our community and our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Humbok Boyle?
I would like to echo Supervisor McKinney's sentiment. Thank you Supervisor Roberts for bringing this forward.
Supervisor Bates?
Thank you. The one thing I'm wondering, I didn't see anything about sending this on to other counties. And is this a resolution that, that you would like to have moved forward so it becomes more than just Eau Claire County recommending it?
Supervisor Roberts?
Passed along to other counties and that they would consider it and potentially passed as well to bring it, you know, added added awareness, I guess, to the state legislature and Governor Evers.
Supervisor Bates?
I think that should be a part of the motion.
Mr. Chairman? Supervisor. I would, I would note that Supervisor Roberts did include in there as well as the Wisconsin Counties Association. Might that accomplish exactly what Supervisor Bates is bringing forward, which I think is extremely important, as she has pointed out, that other counties take that on? I would hope that that would cover that if it's going to the Wisconsin Counties Association.
Thank you.
That satisfies you Supervisor Bates?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question or discussion?
Supervisor Crunk with a question?
Supervisor Knight followed by Supervisor Crunk.
Okay, sorry. I'm phoning in because I couldn't get on, on the, via the internet. I plan to support this, but I'm just wondering what the gay transgender panic defense is.
Supervisor Roberts?
The gay transgender panic defense goes like this. So if somebody were to say, attack me and beat me up or kill me, they would go into court and defend themselves by saying it was my fault that they beat me up or killed me because I'm gay or trans. It's, it's an excuse, and it's, it's, the reason why I included it here is because it's really, it's really a hate defense.
Supervisor Knight? I will assume that was sufficient. Supervisor Crunk? Supervisor Crunk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I also appreciate the work that this took to bring this forward. I do have some questions and concerns, and it, it probably seems and feels a bit counterintuitive as well. But I'm wondering on line 30, no, 23, where it talks about Wisconsin's current hate crime statute is by and large used as prosecutors as a bargaining or negotiation tool, and that the hate crime statute needs enhancement and strengthening. I'm curious if it was enhanced and strengthened, how does that change any any prosecutor's ability to negotiate anything in or out? Because we know prosecutors have a ton of discretion. I also am wondering in the last part about increased training for law enforcement around hate crime. And I've been reading and thinking a lot about this where I don't know that law enforcement has been able to necessarily stop a hate crime. And I also think that we've seen so many hate crimes, as this so beautifully points out. And there's so much language in here that I'm very, very appreciative of and agree with. But I also think that when we start talking about additional training, we've seen a case just 90 miles away that's, that's on trial right now where that particular officer had all of the training that was provided. And we still see hate crimes that are not charged as hate crimes. So, so my perspective, or one of the things that I think about is, how do we, how do we, instead of investing in that type of training, how do we start to begin to address this hate within our community? And how do we begin to address protecting marginalized groups or communities within our own community? And how do we invest in that? So it's not that I don't think that we should support law changes, but I think sometimes when we try to enhance laws that are already existing on the book.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Where's your point of order?
We are swaying away from discussing this resolution.
Your point of order is well, your point of order is, is well taken. So Supervisor Crunk, I would ask you to confine your comment to the resolution before us, and the other items which you mentioned can be taken up in committee and by this, by this board at another time.
Okay, I'll re, I'll re, I'll re, I'll just ask the question. I'll rewrap that up with a question. How, how would this strengthen, I guess my general question is, I'm not sure how this resolution would, would actually strengthen the law or protect communities.
Supervisor Roberts, do you wish to respond?
Um, I'm going to defer to Corp Counsel Sullivan if he would like to, like to try to answer this one. And maybe I can chime in based off of his response.
Corp Counsel? Are you there?
I'm here. My answer to that is, is that it would require prosecutors to recognize these groups that are not previously recognized under the statute.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question or comment? Supervisors, please unmute. All those in favor of File 127, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay.
Very respectfully, nay.
Okay, so that is 27 aye and one nay. The, the resolution passes. Thank you. We have reached the end of our agenda, supervisors. Thank you for your time and your patience and your efforts. We are now adjourned.